Good morning. It's that time if we can all stand for the Lord's Prayer and the Pledge of Belief. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and we will savor our success. And we do rejoice when we see thy presence in this house. And lead us not in temptation, but with the right of faith. Our lives are given, our power will go forever. Amen. The Pledge of Belief is the symbol of the United States of America and is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every team and justice for all. Okay, could I have a motion for approval of the agenda in a second, please?
Absolutely.
Got a motion by?
Second.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Wait a minute, any discussion first? No discussion, no changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair both eyes. Thank you. First, we have on the agenda the proclamation for our deputies. If we can have Sheriff Mike Lewis to the podium, please.
Morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, good morning. This rainy morning. It's always a pleasure when we can recognize our deputies for some of the heroic efforts that they do on a daily basis here in Wy Comico County. Last year, like any other year, was a very busy year for us, but there are two particular instances that stand out which caused us to petition the National Sheriff's Association for the efforts of four Wy Comico County Sheriff's deputies here in Wy Comico County. The first two deputies, I would like to ask to come forward and stand to my immediate right, are Deputy First Class Howard Bowden and Deputy First Class Christian Pecarrero. They both were put in for the Charles Budenmeeks Award for Deputy Sheriff of the Year for 2019. It was on the afternoon of November the 10th, 2018, deputies were dispatched to a residence for a possible stabbing. The deputies arrived to a chaotic scene where the suspect was believed to be on foot in the area here on the west side of Salisbury. Deputies observed a stabbed victim with serious injuries lying in the front yard. Deputies located a second victim a block away. Deputies were able to secure the scene, provide lifesaving measures to the critically injured victims, all whilst soliciting invaluable information for the case from the victims themselves and nearby witnesses. As Deputy Howard Bowden treated one victim, he was able to get enough details to identify a suspect before the victim succumbed to his massive blood loss in shock. Deputies were able to assist in quickly identifying and locating the suspect who had fled the neighborhood into the city of Salisbury, ultimately into the Salisbury Mall or the city of Salisbury. The suspect was safely arrested, taken into custody, and charged with first degree murder. The quick and decisive actions of both of these deputies led to saving the life of at least one of these victims, quickly identifying the murder suspect, and helping to secure a solid case for prosecution. I'm proud to say that both of these deputies did receive the National Sheriff's Award for Deputy Sheriff of the Year and for Medals of Valor for 2019. Deputy First Class Howard Bowden, Deputy First Class Christian Pecarrero, congratulations to both of you on this day. The awards that are being presented by the National Sheriff's Association out of Washington, DC says the National Sheriff's Association hereby confers upon Deputy Howard Bowden of the Wy Comico County Sheriff's Office the National Sheriff's Association Medal of Valor for an act of outstanding personal bravery intelligently performed in the line of duty at imminent personal hazard of life and injury to yourself. Congratulations, Howard. Appreciate you. With that comes the Medal of Valor that will be worn on his dress uniform. No, thank you. Christian, if you'll step up. National Sheriff's Association hereby confers upon Deputy First Class Christian Pecarrero Wy Comico County Sheriff's Office the National Sheriff's Association Medal of Valor for an act of outstanding personal bravery intelligently performed in the line of duty at imminent personal hazard of life awarded this day. Congratulations to you, my friend.
Thank you, Sheriff.
No, thank you. So appreciate what you guys did. Thank you so much. Absolutely. Thank you. In addition to those awards, each of you will receive a proclamation from the Wy Comico County Council with each of their signatures for the Medals of Valor. And what they say is whereas Deputy First Class Howard Bowden with Wy Comico County Sheriff's Office is hereby recognized by the National Sheriff's Association for his outstanding performance while serving the citizens of Wy Comico County and whereas on November the 10th, 2018 Deputy Bowden was dispatched to a residence for a possible stabbing and arrived at a chaotic scene where a suspect was believed to be on foot and where deputies were able to secure the scene, provide lifesaving measures. It mimics exactly what the award said for the National Sheriff's. Very appreciative of these awards by men and women of the Wy Comico County Council will have those as well. I would like to ask two more deputies to come forward. Deputy First Class Dylan Miller and Deputy First Class Ben Parsons, you'll please step up here. These deputies were also put in for Sheriff's Deputies of the Year and Medals of Valor to the National Sheriff's Association. Believe it or not, during that same month, approximately 20 days later, deputies were dispatched to a motor vehicle collision involving entrapment. Upon arrival, deputies saw that a van was overturned on its driver's side lying in a muddy roadside ditch. The work van was full of construction equipment that violently had shifted during the crash. The deputies could not see if anyone was inside the vehicle. The deputies discovered that all the vehicle's doors were locked and badly damaged from the collision. They had to break the rear window and crawl inside this van, at which time they located an individual whose upper torso was buried in deep mud and dislodged equipment and water. The driver of this vehicle was unresponsive. He was non-breathing and believed to be deceased. These two deputies cleared the debris to get to the driver, removed him from the vehicle, established an immediate airway, and attempted to save his life. Fire and rescue arrived on the scene. It took them additional 30 minutes to fully extricate the driver from the vehicle because of the quick and decisive actions of these two deputies standing to my immediate right who entered the vehicle. They located the victim and established an airway. The driver has now made a full recovery, has been reunited with his family. I am proud to nominate Deputy First Class Ben Parsons, Deputy First Class Dylan Miller, who both did receive the National Sheriff's Association Medal of Valor, ribbons, and awards. Gentlemen, thank you both so much. In the interest of time, I'm going to present these to each one of these deputies. Dylan Miller, congratulations. I'm not going to read them like I did the last ones, but you have earned this and you saved a member of our community and reunited that individual with her family and hopefully they're celebrating Christmas with their families here this year. But congratulations to both of you. You're deeply appreciated. Appreciate everything you did. The proclamations for each of you from our county council, thank you guys so much. Ben?
Thank you, Sheriff.
So appreciate what you guys do. Thank you. I'd like to ask one more person who thinks she could step forward, Ms. Tammy Crosswell. Did we surprise you with this?
Yes.
Come on up here. We so appreciate you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. For those who do not know Ms. Tammy Crosswell, she has been a very integral part of Wy Comico County. How many years have you now served with the Emergency Management System here in Wy Comico County?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one years. It was on October the 2nd of this year, the Wy Comico County Sheriff's Office investigated a threat of mass violence directed towards James N. Bennett Senior High School here in Wy Comico County. Obviously, the threat caused significant concern and disruption to our school, our staff, parents, and our community. During the preceding investigation, contact was made with operator Tammy Crosswell at the Wy Comico County Emergency Management Center. A request was made of Crosswell to assist us in attempting to trace or track the origin of the phone call that generated this threat. Without hesitation, Tammy Crosswell immediately assisted by providing tracking information from the cellular providers and other pertinent information to our investigators. Due to her exemplary efforts and dedication, information was obtained under exigent circumstances and requests which led to the capture of the violator. More importantly, it was Tammy's efforts that helped to quickly dispel the credibility of the threat and allow for the school and our community to return to normal operations. Tammy Crosswell is to be commended for her efforts, dedication, and professionalism. And it is my honor to present to you the Wy Comico County Sheriff's Office 2019 Sheriff's Salute. Thank you so much for all you do for us.
I'd like to point out that I don't think there's one deputy in Wy Comico County that took the job to receive these accolades. That's just something that they deserve. And I believe that most people in Wy Comico County would also like to congratulate each and every one of the deputies and even the state police and the city police, all the police officers of Wy Comico County for doing an outstanding job, the job that they do that many people don't want to do. And they don't get the credit that they deserve, but thank you for being here and congratulations. Next on the agenda, we have a proclamation again to Rockawakan United Methodist Church in recognition of their 180th anniversary. Is Reverend Howard Travers here? If you can meet Councilwoman Ackley at the podium, please.
I hate to be the one going after Sheriff Lewis and giving a proclamation, especially since this is my first one, I'm going to try my best. I had the honor of attending the 180th anniversary of Rockawakan United Methodist Church invited by Reverend Travers. It was amazing experience reflecting back on the years that they have had. This church is in its original building site in 1839. I had the company of other local, state, and federal delegates there to celebrate this moment. They had a wonderful recap of the community that's come together with this church. I was watching the slideshow that you had all put together and looking at the kids that my kids had went to preschool with and their grandparents. It was just an amazing feeling of community. At the ending of the service, they had a guest speaker there, Murph the Surf. It was amazing story of a gentleman who had had a life of crime, turned that around, and was able to go into the juvenile justice system and influence children who are, and adults who are on the wrong path to doing the right thing. So with that, whereas founded in 1839, Rockawakan United Methodist Church remains on its original site of 180 years later. And whereas the founding Rockawakan United Methodist Church precedes the Civil War, the Civil Rights Movement, and other important shift changes in the country. And whereas Rockawakan United Methodist Church's mission is to share Christ's love through their actions and their vision, is the disciplines of Christ in ministry to all so they may encourage others to experience a lifelong relationship with Jesus Christ. And whereas Rockawakan United Methodist Church currently blends contemporary and traditional style, services such as technology to enhance their service and welcomes everyone to attend. And whereas Rockawakan United Methodist Church offers a variety of opportunities for spiritual growth through Bible studies, the missions team, the nurture team, the United Methodist Women, Willing Hands, and Lydia Guild, and music ministry. Now, therefore, the Wy Comico County Council congratulates Rockawakan United Methodist Church for being a pillar in our community for 180 years. Would you like to say something?
I want to thank Ms. Ackley and the council for this proclamation. It's truly a great honor and thank you so very much. I'm joined today by the chairman of our church council, Tom Field. I'd like to say a few words to you as well.
Thank you very much for this recognition. It's just been a privilege and a blessing to be a part of Rockawakan United Methodist Church my entire life. It's an amazing congregation and what a legacy that has been handed down to us by the saints who have gone before us. And it is our goal to continue the mission of the church for many years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, I thought you were here for the Board of Education work session.
No, no. I'll be leaving now.
We miss you. All right, I know there's a lot of people here and many of you are here for the proclamations and the awards. If anyone wants to leave, right now you don't have to stay the entire time. And so if we can just take a moment so there's not any disruptions.
You ain't got to say that twice.
So you all need to get back to work.
Thank you all. Congratulations. Be safe out there.
Good morning, Council President, Council members, ladies and gentlemen. Before we go any farther, I just want to bring to your attention that PAC 14 will be changing the video of the meeting today, the videotape of the meeting today at noon.
Okay.
The first item I have on the agenda is discussion with the Board of Education and we have several members here from the Board of Ed.
Thank you.
Good morning.
I thought you had a cake.
Good morning.
I thought you had a cake.
Yeah.
I thought you were bringing us.
I didn't know. I was down there or something.
My square time. I was baking.
A baked brownie that slipped me in the car.
Pizza with your son.
Good morning.
I believe Micah has agendas based upon our collaborative effort on items. I believe you'd like us to begin by introducing ourselves and other members of the board who are here. I'm Donna Hanlon, Superintendent of Schools.
I'm Gene Malone, Vice Chairman of the School Board.
I have with me my three Assistant Superintendents, Dr. Rick Briggs, who's Chief Academic Officer, Mr. Mike Stoffer, who is Chief Finance and Operations Officer, and Mrs. Kim Miles, who is Assistant Superintendent for Student and Family Services. We have other members of the board with us. I'm sure that I have them all here. Mrs. Sifowski is here with us. Mrs. Laird Lewis.
Morning.
Mr. Palmer. And I believe I saw my three. Yeah, sorry. Mary came in. Mr. Fitzgerald is doing well. He is actually at physical therapy this morning. So he was at our last board meeting and will be coming back gradually to be with us. So we're really pleased with that. And I'm not sure where Mr. Brown is this morning, but hopefully he'll maybe join us later.
That's fine.
Okay. All right. So the first item on the agenda is just an opportunity to share with you and with the public some of the initiatives that are currently in place related to school climate initiatives. I have given you, no, I haven't given them to you yet. Do that first. These are by councilperson, in other words, don't take one off the top. These are each already grouped, all the handouts that I'm going to be referring to today, one for each of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pass one down.
Okay. You need one for the minutes probably.
Yep. All right. So the first three handouts that you have there, I'm going to go through and I'm going to walk you through what I want to focus on.
Okay.
Related to school climate initiatives, and that's the case for all of the items that we're going to be reviewing. But I don't think I need to remind everyone that we've had a very busy fall in terms of issues, discipline issues, conduct issues in our schools. Very unusual, began in October. In fact, on the day of our October board meeting was the first incident at Salisbury Middle School. And there for a period of a week and a half to two weeks, it was nonstop at Salisbury Middle School. But I do want to acknowledge how the community and the school staff came together to really turn that situation around. We had a number of individuals from the community, including a parent group that's been very active working with the school administration, our own staff at the central office being over there on a continuous basis. The Wy Comico County NAACP has been working very much in collaboration with us. April Jackson of the City Council has been working with a group of parents to increase the number of mentors that we have, the Phoenix Youth Project. And then an outreach from the State's Attorney's Office and the Sheriff's Office has been instrumental in really turning that issue around. Doesn't mean that we've, as I've said to others, taken our foot off the accelerator in terms of what we're doing there. We don't assume that everything is fine. We are continuing with initiatives there as we are in other schools. But this outreach from the State's Attorney's Office and the Sheriff's Office led us to form, as I've indicated in communication with you all, a small task force to really get down into some very specific strategies for addressing those students who are our most serious offenders in our schools. And to first understand how we each operate and then to figure out how we can operate in unison with a collaborative response to student issues in our schools. So this work group has met two times, right? I've met previous to that with the State's Attorney, but met two times. And also joining us are members or staff from the Department of Juvenile Services, which is also a very important piece of what we do in terms of response to, again, our most serious offenders. So those meetings are ongoing. In fact, we have another meeting later this week where we're really going to be getting down to specific concrete solutions that we'll be sharing when we have those created. We have some ideas, but we want to, we're meeting again this week to further refine those. So that work will be ongoing. As you know, it wasn't just Salisbury Middle, it's been other schools where there have been, there has been this increase of incidents. And I do have to say that in some cases, while I'm not minimizing at all what's happening in the schools, the presence of social media is never our friend. It appears that a lot of exaggeration which makes it very, very difficult for us. It's distracting to us when we're having to put out those fires of rumors and, but we have been steadfast in trying to work with the facts and deal with the situations. We also have to be concerned, especially when we're thinking about the media and social media, about FERPA and HIPAA, the privacy rights of students and staff, and how we can respond. It makes it challenging for us because we know that everybody wants facts and we can't always give them the details of situations. In the case of Parkside High School, that was a perfect example of an exaggeration of what occurred. Again, please do not misunderstand me, I am not minimizing it, but what the rumors that were out there in the community were not at all accurate. So that was what led to a press conference. Actually, that was a day of one of our joint task force meetings. So we were together already. We had just disbanded when that issue occurred, we came back together, and we determined that based upon the media wanting answers, we brought them together and held that press conference. So I do want to also remind you that we always have to be focused on the big picture as I recognize is part of my responsibilities. The issues that are occurring in our school, while they are very, very serious, they really represent 1% to 2% of our student population. And I'm always reminding myself and others of the great things, the great students and staff who are in our school system, and we can't lose sight of that. We have and have had a very focused approach to intervention with students, increased focus based upon the additional funding that we received from the council last year in terms of addressing student social, emotional, and behavioral issues. You know that we added social workers, additional school psychologists, counselors in our schools to really be focused on that intervention side of things. And some of the conversations that we're having in our task force have to do with that, what I'll call that side of things, the intervention, because as educators, we can't lose sight of our responsibility to teach students, to try to teach them appropriate behavior and intervene when we can with supports early on, especially at an early age. And again, that's part of why we have such a focus on early childhood education, preschool, and so forth. So while we have this focus on interventions in our schools, we also recognize that we have to hold students accountable for their behavior. And it's not just students, it's the parents of students who we need to hold accountable. So those are part of what I call the two prongs that we're looking at in terms of this task force's work. I also want to mention the Department of Justice because there seems to be some, a perception in the community, and we all know that sometimes perception is reality with people, but the perception that the DOJ created this issue in our school. We were, when I actually first came on, before I even came on, that the, this agreement was in the works with the Department of Justice. It was a settlement agreement out of court for a three-year period of time that ended in June. It ended in June.
This past year.
That's correct, this past June. We, while there are probably members of the community, including our staff, who believe that we were disciplining students less because the Department of Justice was working with us, that's not the case. It didn't impact our response to discipline. And I think that's important to recognize. So I just wanted to make sure that the council and anyone who's listening understands that, yes, that we worked with them, there were a number, and we've talked about this in previous years, as far as those components of the agreement, mostly focused on interventions. So again, it doesn't mean that the perception isn't reality to some community members, but wanted to get that out there. So what we do have in place is your first handout, and that is the Maryland Guidelines for Student Discipline. And that should be on the top of your pile.
Got it.
So I want to take you through just some highlights of that document. This is regulation by the Maryland State Department of Education, and it governs how we approach student discipline in our schools, but it's guidelines. Our Code of Conduct, which is the second document that you have in your pile, is totally aligned with the Maryland Guidelines, as all school systems are supposed to be. So I'm not going to walk you through our own Code of Conduct, just know that when you compare the two, you'll see they're the same.
May I make a comment before you go further?
Please.
For the record, I would like to point out that these incidents aren't exclusive to Wy Comico County. I see it happening in surrounding counties. I see it in Andorondle County. It's in the news, if anybody's paying attention. It's not just Wy Comico County.
I appreciate you saying that. Doesn't mean that we're not taking it seriously and that because it's happening everywhere that we are not addressing it. But you are absolutely right. At my superintendent's, the Public School Superintendent's Association meeting on last Friday, it was a topic of conversation. So, and I'm going to speak to that just a little bit when I get to that point, but thank you for making that comment. So in the Maryland Guidelines, I'm, as I said, going to walk you through this just a little bit. So you'll see that there's some introductory pages, and on page four of particular importance, I think it would be important for the council to know what the philosophical principles of the state board are that went into developing this framework. They include things like the importance of engaging instruction, which I've been hard They include things like the importance of engaging instruction, which I've been harping on since I've been here, the focus on fostering positive behavior and prevention, learning from mistakes, and that the last resort should be exclusionary discipline, fair and equitable discipline with a focus on disproportionality, training and professional development, community partnerships, and to avoid as much as possible the criminalization of students. That's what you see in those items on page four, which I'm pointing out because, again, that's what those philosophical principles of the state board who adopted this regulation. Then the next few pages, pages six through eight, are expectations for students, staff, parents, and the community, and I won't go through that with you, but just know that they are there. Pages nine through 13 are definitions, and I'll just point out a couple. First of all, expulsion. I wanna talk about that for just a second, and I'm not gonna read it to you, but on the bottom of page nine, I would encourage you to read what it means to be expelled from school. We will often hear individuals say, "Just kick 'em out, just expel them." Expulsion is not what it was when you and I were in school. Expulsion means 46 days or more, is it? And more than likely either for the remainder of a school year or for a full school year, and we must educate them while they are expelled. Little different than when we were in school.
And that means one-on-one?
In most cases, yes. Depending on the, yeah. If they're expelled, there're, there's probably a seriousness of that incident that it could mean, could mean one-on-one. In fact, we do bring students into the central office in a conference room, one-on-one with a contractual employee who we hire, to work with them for six hours a week. So we're still responsible for educating students who are expelled.
How many hours a week?
Six.
Six hours a week, so they're not getting a full, they're not getting a full week's instruction.
Correct. That's the minimum that we need to.
When you go through the expulsion process, how do you account for continuing the education with that student? I mean, it's, it's a difficult student, maybe from a difficult family. What measures do you have to take? And do you go to their house, or do they go to another program in the county?
It varies. Mrs. Miles, do you wanna address that, or?
I'd be glad.
Okay. Thank you.
I finished tearing up the table. So when we have a student who is in a position of being expelled, what we do is arrange for those hours of instruction for the students. And as Dr. Hanlon referenced, it may be that the parent is bringing the student to a designated area at our central office. We may have an off-campus site. We have used other arenas for that. And the requirement through the COMAR regulation, in addition to what you're seeing in the definition, is that we are providing the daily classwork and assignments to the student, that those daily classwork items and assignments are being graded and feedback is being provided in a weekly basis-type pattern, and as well that there is a designee in the student's home-school setting, or the, the traditional school setting, who is serving as a liaison, making weekly contact with the parent and the student as a follow-up. That can be done via email, or by telephone, or it may be included in the time that we are providing. The state does not mandate the six hours. The state mandates the provision of the work we, as Wycomico County Public Schools establish the procedure to include the six hours. Does, I hope that provides the information.
Do you have anybody in that situation right now? Or how many?
I believe we have students on extended suspension who are...
Or expulsion.
Extended suspension is up to 45 days. We do have some students in settings up to 45 days.
About over 45 days.
We do not currently have any. We do have some considerations, but we do not have anyone assigned an official expulsion, which would be the 46-day or...
There are some currently under review.
Yes, there are.
What is the difference between expulsion and having someone at Choices?
Okay. So, so Choices is one of those, it's, it's prior to expulsion or even extended suspension. It is an intervention that we use to address a variety of situations. When I say a variety of situations, it could be a student who, in a school, the administration believes that even though they have not reached over 10 days of suspension, which typically would then be a referral to Choices, there are situations where either the, the administration is encouraging that student to be, to be at Choices. Parents may ask us to place students at Choices. There are, gosh, how many programs over at Choices now?
We have at least four pathways at Choices. One is Alpha. It is short-term. It is an agreement between school administration and the parent that a 20-school-day intervention would be appropriate to see if there are different supports that can be provided. And keep in mind that Choices serves as a smaller setting. We also have more intensive or, or more staff members from the mental health field. We have a school psychologist and three school social workers, as well as a student advisor and school counselor. So we're able to approach from that direction in a little bit more additional, additional manner rather than more of anything. We also have the volunteer pathway, and I meet with parents and students literally on a weekly basis, volunteering for a smaller setting or a different type of flexibility, still maintaining all of their course credits. And then we have, I said there were four, we have the online lab, number three. We do have two labs in the system, and one of those is housed at Choices. It is run sort of like a college campus schedule. We have students who are taking courses there because it fits better in their day. We have students who are there five days a week, trying to get ahead on credits, and we have students who are making up classes there as well. And then we have our students who are assigned because of discipline. So there are, while they're all in the same setting, and they're all in the classrooms and the academic settings and getting the supports, we do have ways of addressing the behaviors, if that's what the situation calls for in terms of, of what is best for the student.
Joe. I guess, I know that your goal is to keep all the children you can in class and, you know, in a learning environment, but I, I guess I'm surprised when I hear the seriousness of some of the incidences taking place, that you don't have anybody on expulsion 45 days over.
We have student, we have cases that are under consideration. It takes a while to move through that process, giving students due process and the investigations that are involved. So, yes.
And where are they during that period? Are they in Choices or possibly in this 45-day window, or?
During the time that the process is taking place, the student may be on a shorter-term suspension. Thank you, Mr. Stoffer. It may be that the student is on a 10-day suspension, which is under the purview of the school by COMAR. They may be involved in that lengthier suspension beyond 10 days. They're short-term, there's long-term, there's extended, and extended will get you into the 45 days. So it may be that the process is occurring while that student is on suspension, and we're having them come into our central office, meeting with the parent, meeting with the school, to make sure that due process is fully administered.
They are not returned to their school.
They're not in the school waiting for that decision.
Yeah, that's, that's the...
Do you have any students right now that's facing criminal charges?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, those ones that are facing criminal charges, are they in the school population?
No. Well, not in the regular school population.
So they would be at Choices?
They could be at Choices, or they could be on, currently on suspension awaiting the disposition, as Mrs. Miles has indicated.
And I'm glad to hear you, you know, you're talking about the task force for these serious offenders, because we, I mean, we all agree that, you know, we want 100% of students to show up the doors to receive the best education possible. And, you know, you read the states, and obviously the state's discipline guidelines are very much geared toward that, but at the same time, reality is reality, as you stated earlier. You've got that 1% of the population, or even less, you know, but there are those serious offenders that, you know, cause us to be sitting here today.
Correct.
And also, I just know, talking to people, you know, out there in the community, when you talk about the schools and so forth, or you talk to educators, probably the first thing they'll bring up is discipline. You know, I don't care where we go, you know, that, you know, the concept of discipline shows up. So, you know, I think it is a number-one priority. You know, I'm glad to see you're having the task force. You know, and I've gotta say, I'm, I'm one of these people, I'm not a, I'm not a blue-ribbon guy. Everybody doesn't get a ribbon for showing up, you know, so I'm, I'm glad you're sitting there, not me, because I think you're probably much more objective about this, but the, but I do wanna say, 'cause I, I, by no means do I profess to be an expert in discipline in our, in our school system, but regarding the task force, I am concerned, I mean, doing more of the same, I don't think is gonna solve a problem as significant as this, whether it's perceived or reality. You know, you know, I do think it's something that's gonna have to be very significant, very different. You know, I think it's gonna be challenging to work within the box. You know, I mean, this, this has existed since 2014, these, you know, these discipline policies and, you know...
And I'm gonna address that in a minute, about as far as what's happening at the state level.
All right. Josh's got the next question.
I'd say every, every other month, if not every month, I run into a different individual. He's either a parent or a educator themselves, or, or just a constituent, who always brings up the same narrative. They say, "Josh, what you don't understand is that..." They can, right now, a child and, and, you know, and a student can go and say whatever they want, they can use as many cursors as they want, and they won't get any kind of punishment because it's all tied to state and federal funding. And so I didn't know if you wanna use that as an opportunity to dispel that, because I hear it again and again. I'm sure the rest of the council members are saying the same thing.
Well, it certainly isn't tied to state and federal funding.
Right.
As you can see, we have a framework within which we operate, but it is, it is guidelines. And I'm gonna take you through a case or a situation and show you how we can use the framework to discipline students, to respond to student issues on different levels based upon what's happening. That might be helpful, but there isn't a tie to state or federal funding.
Early. You mentioned that if you're on extended expulsion, they work with you with your classwork and everything. If you're in Choices, do they still get that classwork? So when they, they go back to?
Yes.
They're up to speed and they're not behind?
Choices is direct classroom instruction, all certified teachers and all subjects, all of core subjects and several of the related arts subjects. So, yes, the, the goal with Choices, and remember, there could be students seated in a classroom in Choices who may be there as a result of their conduct, and they may be in class with students who are there because the parents and students have requested that setting as a volunteer student, and they're going to receive the same high standard of instruction so that when the time is reached, if it is reached, that a volunteer student wishes to return to the larger setting, or a student there for the interventions and supports because of behavior is prepared to return to the traditional setting, that they'll be ready to do so academically.
I'm not an expert either, like Mr. McCain stated, but it's, from a layman's standpoint, I look at Choices, it's a great asset for us. It's a place that, if we can recognize it early, it's like an intervention. We can have students there before they reach expulsion, extended suspension, et cetera. And to Mr. McCain's point about thinking outside the box, I think I like, that's what I like about what Dr. Hanlon's doing with the council or the, the safety group. She's also walked through the schools with Jamie Dykes and Sheriff Lewis one day. I mean, just things out of the blue that we need to do to send the message to the students and the citizens that we're not gonna just sit back and do nothing. We're trying all kinds of things to get it under control and to still educate these young people, 'cause we don't wanna give up on them necessarily. We, we still wanna educate them.
Did you see an increase, Bill mentioned 2014, did you see an increase in problems when they extended the mandatory school age to 18?
Yeah.
Was that...
It's a great question.
You think that was the biggest twist there?
It was a factor.
It's a factor, because now they stay till they're 18, whereas before at 16, they might drop out, they might go to work.
They didn't wanna be there in the first place.
Right. So you got two years if they don't wanna be there, that we're looking at still having to educate them and take care of this situation.
Has there ever been any push by, say, any associations in education in Wycom, not Wycomico County, I mean, the state of Maryland, to try to reverse that?
I don't know specifically about reversing that legislation, but obviously MSEA, as is WCEA, concerned about student discipline.
Well, I know there's concern about student discipline, and you're saying this probably brought on the majority of the problems. I know at Bennett Middle it's probably not the issue for the young ones, but...
Yeah. I think Dr. Briggs is right, it is a factor.
A factor, not the only factor.
Not the only factor.
Yeah, there are many social factors, issues in our community that are also, you know, there's an increase in crime in our community. That's, so what happens in our schools is manifestation of what happens in our community. We just need to be able to respond.
In the essence of time, can we continue?
Yes, we could, thank you. But they're great questions. So the other thing in the definitions that I just wanted to point out, and again, it goes back to the interventions, is when you, on pages 11 and 12, you see referral to, referral to, referral to, referral to. So there's a lot of opportunities for us to refer students to outside agencies, for example, for, for intervention. On pages 14 and 15, you see a summary of the levels of response from level one to level five that then get further expanded in the framework itself. Level five, I mean, excuse me, level one being mostly what can a teacher do, conferencing with parents, detention, that sort of thing, all the way to level five, which is, levels four and five are exclusionary discipline. So, and then beginning on page 16, you see every infraction, every type of infraction that can be a, a cause for concern that we then respond to based upon a referral of that nature. So I wanna take for, for, as an example, class cutting. That's the first one that you see on page 16. And you'll see that class cutting in isolation, failure to attend a class in isolation, is something that can be handled at a level one, which is handled by the classroom teacher. If it's an isolated situation, the teacher can handle that hisself or himself or herself. However, if it's persistently missing a class, and it's just class cutting, it could be handled at a level two. However, what happens for students who then are continuing to persist in class cutting, it's no longer class cutting. It then comes under perhaps the category of disrespect, which is on the next page. And if you look at disrespect on page 17, you see that it can be a simple case of disrespect, which could be a level one or two response, or it could be then where the student is being insubordinate or repeatedly persistently disrespectful in defiance of authority, which... So that's an example of how we don't just always treat it as a level one response if a student is class cutting. If it's persistent and it's ongoing persistent, then it raises to a different level. And depending on if there are other factors involved, for instance, if there's confrontation between a staff member and a student in the hallway who is class cutting, for example, and language is used or threats are made, then it falls into a different category under threatening behavior, which then could, which then requires a higher level or a more extreme level of response. So I use that as an example to show you how that can, how that works within the framework.
Actually, I'm glad you sort of used this as, as an example, but I have a question. What role does a school resource officer play for students that aren't, 'cause I, I'm just always amazed when I hear the kids are in the building, but they are not in the classroom?
Right.
So I'm always just kind of like...
Sheriff still here?
No, they'll, they'll love to answer that question.
Not here, okay. Yes.
But, yeah, so what role do they play?
So I, I will begin that, and then Mrs. Miles, you can fill in the details, if you will. The, the school resource officer is there to, as a, a means of prevention primarily. It's only in the last resort, when there's criminal behavior, that the school resource officer intervenes, and that does happen. But it's mostly for, to address school climate issues, to be present in the hallway, to establish relationships with students, for them to see that law enforcement can be a friend, if you will, that's probably not the right term. can be a friend, if you will, that's probably not the right term, but, um, an ally. So, that's, that is, and, and school resource officers are trained specifically in those areas.
So, they're not gonna clear the halls when the bell rings?
No, they might encourage students to move on. It's the administrators and the staff, and they're there, they're present, as, you know, as much as they can be, to intervene if there ends up being a confrontation.
And if I could go back, I'm sorry, Mr. John.
No, go ahead.
If I could actually reference back to what you just, uh, asked, in terms of clearing the hallways. A school resource officer would be expected, and I can tell you does on a daily basis, serve as a team member, just as the remaining staff and the administrators. So, at the ring of, the ringing of the bell, and students are in the hallway, every adult that's there is going to be working to get those students in the classroom. A school resource officer could, in, in effect, refer a student to administration, if the rules are continuously being violated, and it's not a criminal activity. They are not disciplinarians, so they do fulfill that role, uh, just like our campus patrol, and our teachers with, uh, hall duty, and our administrators, and, and others who are out when students are not in their classrooms. They are to address the students, and to, um, I'll say encourage them, but tell them to go to class, which is where they're supposed to be, that's what they're in the building for. And hopefully, the response will be appropriate, and if not, then, as with the example that Dr. Hanlon shared, um, it will be the student's behavior that will determine what the next steps may be. But a school resource officer would be a part of that team, that is encouraging that behavior, and requiring adherence to the rules, without being involved in discipline.
Well, the complaint I hear from teachers, and I've heard this from multiple teachers, is students won't go into the classroom, you know, and they're trying to get them in, and if they don't, they have to write referrals. This is a word I've heard, I'm not su, I guess that's just a report, or whatever. And, you know, if you have three students, so you're writing three referrals, it's taking fifteen or twenty minutes of, of your time to write each referral, it's coming out of the classroom time. So, you know, is, is it really the teacher's responsibility to get that, those children in the classroom?
It is, ultimately, it is the teacher's responsibility to have that happening. But I would say, I can totally understand, being the teacher ready to get class started, and you've got three students who aren't there. What would happen, I would be very confident in saying, in the vast majority, if not all of the situations such as that, the teacher's going to pick up that classroom phone, because every phone has, every classroom, rather, has a phone, call administration in the office, and say, this person, this person, and this person are refusing to come in the classroom. The referral will come at a later point.
Right.
We don't wanna wait for the referral to come in, before someone starts looking for those students, to see where they are. So, there's that automatic and immediate verbal, uh, notification, and then the referral will be input, as far as the electronic system, at a later point in time, perhaps when students are working on classwork, or at a planning, uh, point for the teacher.
It's everyone's responsibility, so it's not just the teachers, it's the administrators too. It's, it's schools where there's that collaborative, unified approach, to how to handle situations like that, that are the most successful.
Is that one of the agenda items for the task force, addressing that issue?
Yes.
Of students not being in the classroom?
Yes.
Moving on.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, again, I wanted to take you through that scenario, and then I was gonna walk you through, then, what happens with Choices. And we also have Evening High School. We currently are actually examining what you asked about, Mr. Holloway, and that's eighteen-year-olds, where we have eighteen-year-old students, who are still in our buildings, who may have, um, less than a certain number of credits, which indicates that they have, you know, they're not there for the right reasons, and we will be encouraging them to transfer to Evening High School, or another location.
Is that Evening High School also open to older citizens that dropped out at an earlier age?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not just for those?
Twenty-one.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay. Get back on track. Okay, so I wanted to also mention to you what's happening on the state level. So, you have your third document that you have, uh, related to this one, is a report, it's actually a cover letter, um, followed by a report to the state board. Last year, or I might have even begun the year before, um, there was a task force that was convened to examine student discipline on the state level. We had a teacher who, um, attended the teacher feedback meeting, um, from Wycomico. This is the report, I'm providing that, so you can see the kinds of recommendations that came from that task force. When I reviewed the, the results of the task force, I was, um, I guess, my response was, okay, now what? Because I didn't get a feeling like, what I was talking about earlier, with concrete solutions, there were recommendations like, examine the framework for Maryland discipline. So, in fact, at the last Pizzam meeting, I spoke up, and I encouraged, and we are doing that, uh, a conversation with Dr. Salmon at the state level, which answers that question, now what? What, what's gonna happen with these recommendations? Are we gonna go back in? Are we gonna look at the framework and examine where there may need to be some adjustments? So, that's work that will be ongoing, between superintendents and the Maryland State Department of Education. So, just wanted you to know that that was ongoing. So, um, and then, a, as you know, there've been, um, Senator Caroza, in particular, is very interested in if there is legislation that may be appropriate, she would want to be, um, she wants to be involved and supportive as much as possible, and so we, we all have that in the back of our mind. I am not one that believes that legislation is necessary, necessarily the answer, but if there is something that comes about as a result of our work, then certainly, we will, we're gonna be in touch with the delegation, in that regard. So, ongoing work, focus on interventions, but holding students, and, as I have continued to say, in our task force work, ways to hold parents more accountable. Because I can't tell you the number of times, that we have an incident in our school, and we call a parent, and their response is, that's your problem. So, that's, that is a real concern, we have to have parent buy-in, and where we do, we're most successful. Any other questions about this ongoing work?
I have several.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, fir, the first comment I wanted to make was to, can everyone hear me?
No.
So, uh, the first comment is to social media, and it's, it is definitely an issue. I know, whenever the, um, school board had passed the policy on allowing children to have cellphones in school, I was totally on board, I thought it was a great idea. Is that being reconsidered?
We are at the task force level, right now, we're having conversations about that.
Okay, all right, great. Um, and then, getting onto the task force, you're having the state's attorney, the sheriff's department, and the Department of Juvenile Services, correct? So, my concern with that is, these entities are all to be a non-biased entity, when speaking of students in the justice system. So, bringing that team together, is that, have you, have you checked with the Department of Justice, that that is okay, to bring those all separate entities together?
I don't think that there would be a problem bringing entities together to collaborate on solutions.
Those specific entities, though, are supposed to be non-biased, and not have, one is advocating for the child, and it could be an issue in the school system, so.
I think it would depend on what the recommendations are.
Okay.
Yeah, bringing groups like that together, I, I can't imagine anyone not, um, not encouraging collaboration between community entities.
Well, I don't think it's a, it's a discouraging of community collaboration, it's the entities you have involved are to be non-biased entities, when you're talking about juvenile justice. And they're in a room together, talking about students. So, that, that just is a concern for me, because that's not what we're hearing from the state, as far as Department of Juvenile Services.
Ms. Miles has a response?
I, I apologize, I didn't mean to overspeak, but I did wanna share, um, and if I misunderstand, Mrs. Ackley, please, um, just let me know, but we're not speaking of individual students or individual situations, we're speaking in generalities, in terms of behaviors, responses, supports, um, ways to engage, but not specific situations with any names, any schools, anything that would be identified.
Right, I didn't understand if that's what you're concerned with.
I'm not sure if that's what you were asking.
No, it's just that, you know, what we're hearing on the state level, from the Department of Juvenile Services, is that these entities are all to remain separate. And so, having them come together as a task force.
Tell me who you're hearing this from, so that I can follow.
The Department of Juvenile Services.
And they're at the table, but they're.
They're at the table.
Yes, on the state level.
Yes.
And at this level too.
The regional director is there, who represents.
So, she's also there?
Yes.
He, okay. Yes, his name is Cory Fink.
Do you have a parent representative, or a student, or student representative, or a teacher representative?
It's just, it's purposefully limited at this point, for just those who can specifically, uh, come up with concrete solutions.
Okay, um, so, were you aware that our county received a pretty substantial grant for mediation, for the Department of Juvenile Services?
Our county, you mean, the, Wycomico County? Received a substantial, yes.
Ms. Miles.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, I believe.
Are you speaking with reference to the local management board?
Yes.
That, that is separate from the school system.
So, are, is that, is a local management board then being incorporated to this task force, because it was a pretty substantial grant that we received?
I, I'm aware of the grant, and that is actually, and that grant, um, is specifically in relation to law enforcement and mediation. Juvenile's engaged with law enforcement and mediation. Um, so, we do work with mediation in our schools, while that grant specifically focuses on the community aspect. Um, I, I serve on local management board, so I have some background with that, um, to know how the, the two connect.
Okay. And then, speaking of the Department of Justice settlement agreement, yes, it was settled on an agreement moving forward. And the three things that they had hit on, it, it was interesting, looking over the state and the local code of conduct, was the lack of conflict resolution, functional behavioral assessments, and behavioral intervention plans, and in-school interventions. So, what are you, are you, is, are you now doing functional behavioral assessments?
We have been doing.
Before you suspend, before you suspend a child?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, every child, before they're suspended, or have disciplinary actions?
Mrs. Miles can speak to that.
That's done with all of them.
Uh, I'm sorry, we're, we're having microphone issues over here. Uh, with regard to functional behavior assessment, that is, um, an action that can come through the IEP process, but is not specific only to students with, um, special education services. We have student service teams in all of our schools, who identify students, prepare, implement, monitor, and adapt, and adjust behavior support plans, which are basically the, a very similar, um, component to the behavior intervention plan. We have lots of letters floating out there, the FBA precedes the BIP, and we have a BSP, which is the same as a BIP. It is a plan that is designed to meet the needs of the student, with regard to intervention, supports, redirections, things of that nature. And students are identified, um, di, most specifically, if they receive a certain number of exclusionary days of discipline, but can be identified at any point in time, based on a concern that may be raised by a staff member. There is a very, um, supported process in each of our twenty-four schools, and a very specific team in each of those schools, that works to meet those needs. And as far as the other interventions, the, I apologize, you said in-school intervention, Mrs. Ackley?
Conflict resolution, and the in-school interventions?
The conflict resolution is, um, addressed through our school counselors, as well as our student advisors, and our social workers. Uh, we continue to seek more of those persons in those roles, but, um, we have training that crosses all three roles and responsibilities, to include conflict resolution, as a part of what happens, and it may be in relation to, um, discipline, and bullying and harassment. Uh, we have restorative practices in place in all twenty-four schools, and each of our programs, and that is a way of helping youth to understand the impact of their behavior on themselves, as well as on those around them. And we have worked, we're now into, uh, the ending of our second year, beginning of our third year, in training in all of our schools, with restorative practices, restorative circles, community circles, things of that nature.
So, before a student is, has expulsion, or they are, um, removed from the school, they all have received a BIP, or a functional behavioral assessment?
If there has been a consistent and persistent, uh, behavior that's inappropriate, if a student, in one event, uh, presents with very egregious or safety-concerning behaviors, there may not have been one in place. A student may have had no discipline, and there is an extreme fight, or attack, or something of that nature. That student will then, upon return to school, at whatever, uh, point that may be, will then be, uh, working with the student services team, to have that support in place, but it may not have presented in terms of behavior prior to a specific action on the part of the student.
So, how many BIPS do you have in place in the county?
I would not have that information in front of me, but I, I'm not certain.
Okay. Um, let's see. So, I know several counties have gone to independent conflict resolution agencies. And there, the state board of education did put out more of a peer-to-peer mentoring for families, and how that would look. One was to help facilitate, um, conflicts within the school, conflict resolution, and they have several agencies listed. Wycomico's not one of the counties that participates. Is that something that you're interested, that you would pursue, or be interested in pursuing?
It is a topic that's on, um, the radar of our mental health coordinator, who works with all of our social workers, our school psychologists, uh, the persons in those roles. I will say that, in Wycomico County, um, we are very fortunate to have, while we would always like more, I know we all like to hear that, but we're very fortunate to have the mental health support staff that we have in our schools. That being our school counselors, with multiple different arenas that, that they, in which they work, our student advisors, our social workers, and our school psychologists, whereas some systems may not have those persons in those roles in their schools, so they may engage differently with community groups. But, uh, we also have a number, I want to say, seven may be the number, please don't quote me on that, until I could confirm, but a number of community, um, mental health agencies, that are working with their clients in our schools, with agreement between, um, themselves and our entity, through a memorandum of understanding, and then, obviously, with parent involvement. So, um, we have a, a number of different ways in which we're addressing that.
Mm-hmm.
Long answer to come back around to. Yes, we are looking in the peer-to-peer, and the family part.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it's a matter of, we're getting the resources together, and many different ways to approach that.
We, the local management board had a focus group on that, and I actually attended as a parent.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that was, the topic of discussion, was meeting parents where they're at.
Absolutely, as we seek, the local management board continues to seek input.
And there's, there's misperceptions of the school, or, I, I mean, parents have all kinds of different thoughts, and having someone to meet them on their level, to help them resolve that conflict, whether than averting those actions.
Let's keep in mind that we have a long agenda, and we're on a timeline, and I think it seems like Dr. Hanlon just scratched the surface.
I just, the first item, we're done.
Yes.
But we will keep you posted, obviously. The second item on the agenda was one that, um, a councilperson requested, and that is, um, the second handout that you have, the FY20 Blueprint for Maryland's Future Funding Report. You have that in front of you, I'm gonna ask Micah, and/or Jesse, to speak to that. I will just tell you generally, that that, it is the same plan that we shared with you when we first received the Kerwin funding, um, and we spoke with you about, as we were preparing, and actually revising our budget, based upon those two, um, sources of revenue.
So, just so we're on the same page, this was, these were the six Kerwin grants that I mentioned at our last meeting.
Yes, you just hadn't said Kerwin, and, um, so, we didn't know which grants you were referring to.
They, they're interchangeable now, Kerwin and blueprint.
Right.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, good morning, council members. Um, so, as you may know, like other counties across the state, we did receive six funds this year, from the state, under the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. Uh, that funding's designed to be a bridge from the current funding formula, from the state, uh, to the new funding formula, that'll go into effect under Kerwin, uh, once, uh, that is passed. As a requirement for receiving, uh, these funds, uh, we recently, uh, completed and submitted to the state, uh, a document that explains exactly how these funds were spent, and are being used at this time. Uh, that report's posted on our website, on the transparency portal, uh, and that's what we're gonna be sharing with you today. It's under the title FY2020 Allocation of Funds, Distributed Under the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. Um, it was created collaboratively, uh, with, uh, the finance team, instruction, student services, and special education. So, I wanna thank all the hard work that, uh, each one of those departments have put in, for meeting the requirements from the state, to explain how these, uh, funds are being used. And our comptroller, Jesse Reed, is here this morning, to go into some detail behind that.
Good morning, President Dodd, Vice President Cannon, council members. Thank you for having me here today.
Thank you for having me here today. I'd like to briefly go over how Wycomico County Public Schools allocated the funding provided under the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. As Micah mentioned, there were six funding sources that were provided by the bill, the first being special education, and that's the first tab, Tab 1, enhanced special education funding Wycomico. As you can see, we were awarded a total of 1.689 million to fully implement IEP and 504 plans for students with disabilities. We used some of this funding to hire nine additional special education teachers and have signed them to schools with higher student-to-teacher caseloads. Additionally, 24 special education instructional assistants have been hired to provide supplemental aid and services to students with disabilities as delineated in their IEP and 504 plans. And basically, I just summarized what's on page two. So, moving on to the second tab, which is number two, concentration.
Excuse me, Jessie, if I could just ask you a quick question there.
Sure.
So, none of this money for this particular grant has been supplanted in your budget? It is all exactly what you've outlined?
Yes, ma'am. Number two, concentration of poverty Wycomico. That's page three. We received five concentration of poverty grants in the amount of 248,833 each for our schools that had free and reduced, free and reduced meal percentages of 80% or higher. Those schools were Beaver Run, East Salisbury, Glen Avenue, Prince Street, and Chipman. The grant funds five positions at each of the five schools, a community school coordinator, a school nurse, a homeschool liaison, an ESOL assistant, and either a social worker or ESOL teacher, depending on the need of that school. And again, the next page is kind of details what I just mentioned. It details the roles of the school community coordinator, which one is, was one of the required positions per the bill.
So, Jessie can, is it fair to say then that all these kids will, the ESOL kids will all be educated at their homeschool? They won't no longer be bused to Bennett?
This is specific for elementary schools.
Oh, okay.
And that's correct in elementary.
Page six, the Transitional Supplemental Instruction Grant is used to fund eight reading intervention teachers. Intervention teachers work with three to four struggling readers for 35, or three to four struggling readers daily for 30 to 45 minutes. Part of the funding also went towards a reading program called Imagine Learning and Literacy, which helps student develop, students develop grade-level reading and language skills. And again, just a brief description of how the students are selected for, for the reading intervention, the next page. And number four, supplemental pre-K grants for Wycomico. The supplemental pre-K grant on page eight, 640 total full-day pre-K slots are being offered as a result of this funding and the funding we received from the pre-K, what's the term? Expansion grant, pre-K expansion grant. 20 full-day slots were added as a result of this Kerwin grant, 180 slots were added through the pre-K expansion grant, and 120 slots were converted from half-day to full-day. And that's what we use those, those fundings for.
That's pretty substantial.
It is, it is. We're really pleased with our enrollment. I just wanted to go back to the, the concentration of poverty grant.
Yes.
And it has here that there are supports in place for, what is that? Be responsible for increasing parent engagement through activities, homework task force, parent, classroom parent programs, grade-level parent programs. How are, how is, how is that being implemented?
Ms. Miles?
As required through the Kerwin funding source, a community school coordinator was hired in each of those schools, and those persons in each of those schools work directly with their community and with their families to address a variety of areas. I have persons on my team who meet monthly with those five persons as a way to kind of increase and encourage all the activity that's happening. And they have very specific job descriptions that keep that focus on engaging all of the partners for those five schools.
And are they listed on the website if parents wanted to find them, or parents wanted to become involved in?
I believe so, but I will go back to confirm that.
Encourage them to communicate the school.
Number five, teacher. Number five, teacher salary incentive grant. The teacher salary incentive grant went towards a 1.5% cost of living increase per the requirement of the bill. We were also to use some of this funding to adjust our pay scale and increase our starting teachers' salaries, again, per the language in the bill. And the final piece, the last page, mental health coordinator. We were given $83,333 to hire a mental health coordinator, which we have done, and it kind of outlines the responsibilities of that person on the, on the last page.
How many employees have we hired so far for this?
As a result of this funding?
Yes.
25 for the grants alone. The community coordinator, 34 or so for special ed at least. I got the numbers here for pre-K. I think it was five plus, five plus 10 plus six, so 11, 21 for, for pre-K, so quite a few.
A number of positions in much-needed areas.
Is the state going to continue the funding for this?
We hope so.
We all hope so.
That's the question.
Are there any more questions on that?
So, with the special education, just when citizens, I have three kids in the public school system, and I'm an PTA and other student, student venues because I have children. So, I tend to get all the school questions. So, the, with the special education, if there's an issue and a parent needs help, would they contact the community outreach coordinator or?
Are you speaking in relation to the five schools that have the community school coordinator?
Well, I guess all of them have the special education increased, so it would be more of?
Absolutely. We always want our parents, our families who have questions, concerns, or ideas to contact their school administration, and the school administration will help them to make the contact with the appropriate persons. Also, we have our special education department right at our central office, and calls can be received there, and we will work with the family and the persons involved to get them in touch with the persons who can provide the greatest amount of support and direction.
Okay, thanks.
I'd like to say that I'm very pleased and to see that you have done such a great job in implementing the supplemental funds. I mean, I see, I see Imagine 2022 all over this.
Absolutely.
And it's so nice to see that, you know, I mean, people want tangible results, and I think these are tangible results. And what we've always said of the Board of Education was we wanted to see accountability. I think this goes a long way to proving that we're being very proactive with it, so thank you.
I'll look forward to seeing those results.
So, do we have like a hard time to end as far as, do you want me to just keep going in other words?
Yeah, just keep going.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to make sure you didn't have somebody else that was.
You missed that about a half hour ago.
I think we're close anyway. So, the status of the FY21 Capital Improvement Plan, we gave you a one-page handout that just gives you the latest. This was a letter that, under my signature, that went to the IAC, just summarizing where we are with our requests for funding from the state. And I won't read that to you, but we have received 75% funding at this stage of the process, and we are appealing for what we would receive at the 90% stage. So, do you want to comment at all, Micah?
Sure, absolutely. So, the capital improvement plan for FY21 has remained unchanged for the three main priorities moving forward. There's still a replacement school for Beaver Run, planning for the Mardella Middle High renovation and addition, and then the West Side Intermediate Roof Systemic Project. So, our Director of Facilities Planning and Construction, Lisa Ashby and her team have been working with the Interagency Commission at the state level. They've been working with the School Building Commission at the local level, of which Mr. Davis is the representative for the council. We also have Mr. Strausberg on the School Building Commission for the county executive. Obviously, we work with the Board of Education, and then specifically at the school level for each of these projects, work with the administration, the staff, and also parents in input sessions as we move forward. So, Mrs. Ashby's here today to provide some, provide us with an update on where we are with the FY21 CIP.
Ms. Ashby?
Good morning, everyone.
Can you speak up?
Sure. Good morning, everyone. Is that better? Well, I've been waiting in the, in the back patiently for my, for my turn. As Mr. Stoffer had mentioned and Dr. Hanlon had already mentioned, the state has issued their 75% round recommendations, which you can see our appeal letters in front of you. Their 90% recommendations are anticipated to come out in probably mid-February with their 100% recommendations expected probably early May. As you all are aware, because you were faced with the same situation due to various legislation that slid to June this past fiscal year, so obviously those dates are subject to change. However, we'll continue to monitor them. As of right now, regarding individual project status, we anticipate bringing forward the guaranteed maximum price to the School Building Commission in early January for board approval and then submission of that contract to the state. So, we anticipate to be breaking ground in early March if all goes well in those categories. And as of now, we don't anticipate an interruption to that workflow. Priority two, as already has been discussed, is Mardella Middle and High School's major renovation and addition. We actually just wrapped up the EdSpec Committee yesterday afternoon. It was a really good group of individuals. A lot was accomplished. We will also be bringing that forward to the board in a work session in early January, and with their approval, we'll be submitting to the state in support of our planning approval, planning request to the state for fiscal year 2021. As many of you know, West Side Intermediate Roof is a repeat project request to the state. The state is being rather selective in how they choose to support systemics. We continue to put that out in front of them. At 100% eligible cost share situation, it's important that we garner those state dollars to execute these systemics to keep everything operating with, in the school district. And I stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Well, if increase our odds, I just saw, what was it, just a few weeks ago, Governor Hogan announced additional capital funding. Would that include like these systemic renovations such as at West Side?
We don't know at this point in time. There's actually been two announcements, one from the legislative side, and they're talking billions of dollars. However, no one has released how you access those funds, how you apply for those funds, or who potentially could be eligible. By all means, we're, we're, we are monitoring those. Every state funding source that becomes available, we're, we're going through our capital needs, and we're, we're finding projects that could meet those eligibility requirements and applying.
Any more questions?
So, I want to thank Mr. Stoffer because I've spent endless hours on the phone with him, just to save all of you from listening to my questions and him walking me through the process of this, so I really appreciate it. I was just wondering what, are there any projects outstanding that are not finished? And when is the estimated completion? And is there any money that was left from previous projects that we are going to flow over to another project?
Are you referring to bond fund balances that the county may be carrying?
Any, any funding that you received, state, local?
So, we usually expend all state dollars. So, the strategy is always, especially on a major project, for example, for Beaver Run, they've already allocated $7 million to that project. So, we always prioritizing executing the state funds as early as possible on a project so that we don't have to get, seek reimbursement for the county until all state funds are expended. I can't think of a state-funded project recently that we have had residual funds. When you do have residual funds, the state can put that in a contingency and apply it towards a future capital funding request. So, if something came under budget, the state has a very detailed spreadsheet that they post on their website and how they're allocating funds. They may choose to take contingency or residual funds and apply it to a future allocation, and they'll show that in a different column.
That's Mr. Stoffer very patiently walked me through that entire spreadsheet.
Excellent.
Any more questions? Dr. Hanlon?
Okay. There was also a question about the Office of Compliance and Monitoring Annual Report. So, I have provided you with what exists, and that is the annual report for the state of Maryland. There is no annual report specific to Wycomico County. However, I, I will clarify. If, if you look in this document that I provided for you, you will see, just to give you a little bit of background for those of you who may not be familiar, this office was created by MSDE in 2018, I believe it was, in response to some grading issues across the bridge in some of our larger school system. And so, the work of this group, this office at MSDE, looks at four areas, or was created to look at four areas, and they're on the bottom of page three. They look at graduation rate validation review. They look at non-public school textbook program review. They look at principal evaluation system, and they look at complaints that are, have to do with waste, fraud, or abuse. So, in response to the creation of this group, a, an examination team is going about the state and coming to individual counties. They've done half the counties at this point, looking specifically at graduation rate validation. And so, they came to Wycomico County in June of last year and spent several days with us, I believe, several days with us. So, 13 systems have been reviewed to date, and the remainder of the systems, 11 systems will be reviewed in FY20. And then, they provide for us what they call a final inspection report that is not for distribution. It is, every page is stamped, limited official use, and we're not to distribute it. But I can tell you, and I'll give you, so that I'm not violating anything, I will show you a quick visual that all of our areas are green. So, in other words, they did make a couple of recommendations in the area of written procedures that they suggested that we do, which we have done. Also, in the state-level report, you'll see on page, I know I'm going through this quickly, but on page seven are all the areas that they reviewed within that graduation validation review. And you can see in the category of grading integrity and grade modifications, there were findings, 24 findings in the 13 systems that were reviewed. That's where our two suggestions came, our two recommendations came. And again, we have completed those recommendations, but nothing raised concerns at the state level in our review. Those recommendations had to do with creating written procedures for individuals who wanted to, for example, change grades. We had processes in place, but we didn't have a written procedure, so now we do. And that's been the case with most school systems.
Any more questions?
Your last item, and I'm, I put it on here because I really wasn't sure I understood it. Someone wanted to know about inclusion in press conferences, so.
Who had that question?
Sorry.
Any comment on that?
We, we meet with the press when the situations arise, and I, again, I don't know what, what you're, I would imagine you're not suggesting that the council needs to be present during a press conference because that wouldn't be practical or appropriate. So, I'm, I'm happy to answer any question that you have about that.
Is there any questions?
I just wasn't sure where that came from.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't my question, but I will ask a question.
Sure.
At what point, when there's an issue, when there's an incident in a school, does it get released to the press? You have a procedure, you know, in the past, we've had calls from parents that said something happened at a school today, and, you know, my child come home and told me about it, but nobody hears about it for a week, you know? So, is there policies about the level of violence that you release?
I would, it has, it varies from situation to situation and mostly depending on the severity of the situation. If it's a disruption to the school, then we're working immediately with the school administration to get out communication to the parents because that's what's the most important, so that parents feel assured of what's going on, or at least they have factual information. So... Anybody else want to chime in because I'm not?
I'll chime in because to Mrs. Ackley's point, it's, some of these incidents, parents knew about it before full administration knew, right? The students are at school on their cell phones texting their parents or their friends. It's on Facebook, it's. It's on Facebook, it's everywhere. We're trying to investigate it and come up with the facts that we can release to the media. So that's one of the dynamics of the world we live in now, is social media hits fast. I mean, there's videos of what's going on, because the students can video it. So I don't think we have a definite policy of how we release it or when, but we do have all our facts in line before we release it, because we have to be careful what we say. Great point, great question.
Yeah, I can tell you what they're doing at Salisbury Middle, and it's working well. No cell phones.
I know that they have, have...
Did you say no cell phones?
No cell phones.
I was on the board when we approved using cell phones in the school system, and I must say, I think we made a mistake, because my kids were texting me all day long. And the teachers should have been monitoring that. Maybe that should be reconsidered.
Oh, man, I got, I'm biased on that. We had an incident on one of my buses. Kid faked it, and that was kid recorded it. And with these buses now, you can't see, because the seat's so high, but the kid recorded it and gave it to the school bus driver. They gave it to the administration, and the kid got 30 days.
There are some good purposes for it.
Yeah, it is.
Yes. We'd like to think that that's why everyone's using it, for good purposes.
Hey, let me wind up by saying thank you for your time. We appreciate the relationship we have with the council. We appreciate the questions, the intensity of which you went through them and read them and understood them and asked the questions. We had great dialogue, so feel free to reach out to anyone in the...
Likewise, yeah. We want to thank you all, you know, and you all obviously take this very seriously, and, you know, you demonstrated your commitment to it, you demonstrated your competency, and like Mr. Cannon said, you know, you're using dollars in the right places, where you're getting tangible results, and, you know, we're all here to work on it together and make, make it better.
That's very important. Thank you very much.
I would like to take the time to thank these board members that took the time out of their busy schedules to attend this important meeting, so thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you all.
Next on the agenda, we have the submission of the capital improvement budget and program, and we have Mr. Wayne Strasberg, Director of Administration, and Mr. Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration, here to give us a brief summary.
And while we're waiting for them to move out of the room, I would like to point out that we do have to change the tape at 12 o'clock, and probably best to take lunch then, so we don't have to take two breaks, so we'll kind of wing it until then. So I know you all have to take lunch too, so 12 o'clock, we have to change that tape. Mr. Strasberg?
Good morning. We submitted our 2021 through 2025 capital plan to the council administrator yesterday afternoon. For the benefit of the public, the capital improvement plan is a five-year planning document, the first year of which is actually a budget year, and that budget year becomes incorporated into the county's operating budget that is passed in June. Projects that are incorporated into the capital improvement plan are our significant scope with an expected useful life of at least 15 years or more, and typically require multi-year funding. Typically, these are land building projects and other infrastructure projects. As I said, the first year is budget year and is incorporated into our budget. Years two through five are planning, but they provide context for the fiscal decisions that we make in the budget year, because once we start a project, again, it's usually a multi-year project, so you don't want to start a project and then have to stop the project. So the proposed 2021 capital improvement budget year contemplates $26 million in general fund projects and $1.3 million in enterprise projects. We have solicited input from all of our departments, including those other agencies who we provide funding to. We're putting forward those project requests that we believe serve the best interest of the county and its citizens. The plan visions $12,189,500 in borrowing to fund the new public safety building and to continue the Beaver Run Elementary School replacement. $11,132,160 in debt will be retired in fiscal '20. So our net additional debt would be a little bit over $1 million, still keeping the county well below its legal debt limit. We also contemplate $9.6 million in PEGO support if federal and state grant funding cannot be sourced for various projects we're already underway with both our state partners and our federal partners to see if there are funding streams that may be available to support our CIP.
Have we called up on the last PEGO with the board? Have we called up with the last PEGO we worked out with the Board of Ed on future funding from the state?
I'm not quite sure what, I'm not quite sure what you're asking me, Larry.
Remember they asked for, Ms. Hurley, you know what I'm talking about? When the Board of Ed was asking for PEGO, and I think it was on Beaver Run?
Yeah, it was on Bennett.
It was on Bennett.
It was on Bennett, yeah. So it would be funded from Bennett.
I just wonder if we were caught up on that?
Yeah, I think we're in sync with those ongoing projects to, to answer, I think they answer a question that Councilwoman Ackley asked earlier with regard to outstanding bond indebtedness. Our finance department is working with Mr. Reed as we speak to, to go through all the prior year projects that have been bonded to see if those projects have been closed out and if there are funds that are available to be reapplied. So we hope to have that wrapped up relatively soon. Hopefully today? Well, that'd be wonderful.
Thank you.
So anyway, so in our cover letter, you will note that given the uncertainties facing us relative to the upcoming Maryland General Assembly Legislative Session, we are recommending that a resolution be passed extending the date for adoption of the CIP. That affords us time to consider projects and their funding in the context of decisions made that will likely impact our finances. We did that last year. Our CIP is really at a phase with the General Assembly and at a phase with our operating budget. To, to change that would require a charter amendment, but I believe we can do that through resolution on an annual basis, and we suggest we do that. In the meantime, the document we're putting forward serves as a basis for discussing the merits of the various projects included therein, and we look forward to ensuing work sessions where we can have those discussions with various departments.
At one of the town hall meetings, it was mentioned about the method of borrowing. Have you determined what you're going to do about borrowing money yet?
I have not yet, Joe. I met with Davenport and Associates during the winter MEGO conference. My, my major concern was I didn't want to see the county taking an interest rate risk, and right now, rates are still declining. So again, I think we discussed this when we did the 10-year forecast. We've got to be nimble here, because we don't want to be borrowing at rates higher than we could if we went to the market. On the other hand, I can't in good conscience make suggestions on borrowing right now, not knowing where we're going to be in April, given the Kerwin discussion in particular. So I, I hope to be able to come back to you during the CIP cycle with our recommendation as to how we would borrow the money.
Wayne, would you say that the, the window has closed on, as far as going to New York and bonding it in the traditional fashion?
Oh, no, I, no, 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 we can do that. I, you know, I had that discussion with, with Davenport as well, and there's no, you know, there's no magic to that. I think going to the bond grading agencies right now and going to the market right now with the uncertainty that's hanging over us would probably not be appropriate. I think it's better to go to New York and to market, once we have a better idea of the fiscal context that we're going to be operating in over the next several years.
Well, this is probably the worst question.
If you could speak into the microphone.
So we do, so we do get, we do get the worst news from the state as far as Kerwin goes. What's on your hit list as far as what wouldn't, wouldn't get funded or wouldn't get borrowed or...
In terms of the capital improvement plan, Joe, it, it's really, the, the Kerwin, the Kerwin decisions are going to have an impact both on the operating budget, the annual operating budget, and our ability to fund capital. And I just can't, I'm not there yet with what I would recommend in terms of what we would forego, what we would delay. I just, I can't put it into context yet.
One quick question, and I don't know how much we want to talk about that, talk about this today as opposed to a work session, but I know we kind of mentioned, it's mentioned here, about our county policy of 12% of not retiring anymore than, you know, but that's, that's not a charter policy, right? I mean, we keep referring that as a county policy.
Yeah, the PNI, yeah, the PNI, the 12% PNI limitation is really a policy. It's not embedded in the charter. But we think that it's fiscally prudent.
Yeah, I'm not saying, I mean, I'm not saying it's a good number, bad number, or anything. It's just, I mean, it just seems to give reference, like it's a, you know, almost like it's a charter thing, but it's not.
No, it's a policy.
I mean, the limits on our amount of debt is, but...
Right.
But also I noticed, though, in our CIP, and we just heard the Board of Ed talking about their capital improvement, and I know Jesse's here, but I see, like, we don't have anything going out in '24, '25, but in their CIP project, I mean, those projects span, you know, their long-term projects, they span over five years, so they have dollars in '24, '25. So shouldn't those be in concert with each other?
Again, I, I, it's difficult for me to contemplate anything past '21 right now. So in terms of projects that are multi-year projects, I'm hesitant to make those kinds of commitments until the fiscal environment is, is clear. With projects that are already started, certainly we've started those projects, we're going to continue those projects. So the, those planning years are, are just that, they're planning years, and, and that changes from year to year based on what the county's needs are, and...
Yeah, well, take, take a look at that, though, like, '24, '25 for Board of Ed, yeah.
I do.
I mean, they got to be, you know, they just seem to maybe they have to be in concert, and they can't stop the project midstream, so...
No, that's an important, no, that's an important point, that, 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 once, once we start a project, you don't want to stop a project. So the point's well taken.
And for the record, we are going to have multiple work sessions for the benefit of the public as well.
Correct.
So if you have some questions that can wait, tell us.
Correct.
Mr. Strasberg, or Mr. Taylor, do you have a question?
I just had a suggestion regarding Mr. Strasberg's suggestion that we postpone the deadline for adoption of the final CIP. Last year, we did that in two stages. I would suggest this year, just going ahead and doing it in one separate stage and making it simultaneous with the adoption of the final operating budget.
Of the budget.
It takes off all the pressure and need to come in and do something twice. You know, probably do that at the next meeting, I think. It's just a simple resolution, as I recall.
It is, it is a resolution, yes.
Can we do it at the next meeting, is that what he said?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Sure. Is everybody in agreement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Strasberg? Any more questions? All right. I did mention that we will be having more work sessions. Ms. Hurley, what's next?
That's all I have on the agenda.
Okay. We can move on to the Assistant Internal Auditor, or in this case, it'll be Mr. Roser.
Thank you, Mr. President. You have, you have the internal auditor. I'd like to call your attention to Resolution 139, 2019, concerning the sick pool audit.
Yes.
The auditors performed an audit of the county sick pool program. The county sick pool program provides additional paid sick leave for employees who are sick and, and have used up all their available accumulated leave. The scope of the audit was calendar year 2017 to date. We reviewed all the data, we reviewed all the decisions that were made. The conclusion of the audit was satisfactory, that is, we found no significant concerns, and satisfactory is the highest rating on our familiar three-point scale that we use to conclude our audits. Accumulated bank according to management is around 64,000 hours. Contributions to the sick pool roughly mirrored awards for the test period, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Well, first, we'd like to introduce this as a, a motion for Resolution 139, 2019. I need a second. Do we have a motion?
Some moved to introduce.
You got a motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion now?
Mr. Roser, Mrs. Hurley had some very good, I think, pertinent questions that she had asked earlier on. I guess it may have been through an email, but a lot of the values are done in hours, but that sort of doesn't correlate directly with expenses. So whereas a difference between a high-level or low-level employee, if you have contributions from low-level employees, and yet you're, you're trying to contribute to a high-level employee, there's a much difference, a much larger difference in the, the amount of funds that are transferred. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, I understand your question, and logically, you would think that. We have consulted with the, our external financial auditors on, on that very situation. The contribution to the sick pool, although it may have a monetary value associated with it, and conversely, a, a use of the sick pool may have a monetary value associated with it, but in the grand scheme of things, we have budgeted salaries for the employees that are getting paid these amounts. And in government accounting, there is no liability concern on the balance sheet for any potential payouts from the sick pool. So in other words, it, it's a wash. We budget X amount of, of dollars for any employee, no matter what their pay scale for that particular year, they are not getting paid any more or any less than that amount, speaking from a budgetary perspective. So basically, we have a bank, which we are told is 64,000 some odd hours. It's not likely that we'll ever use that amount of, of hours in any kind of awards to a particular year, a particular number of years. So the auditors, and both internal and external, do not feel that the monetary part of this situation is anything that needs to be of concern.
The only other point that was made was it is open to individuals to receive the sick pay hours, even though they don't contribute to the program?
Currently, yes. If you look at the appendix in the audit report, it has county personnel manual, chapter and verse, section 1507M. If you look at number four, it reads in part that a member of the pool that does not qualify can petition the committee for, for these, for sick pool hours, and, and of course, then it's up to the committee to decide whether or not they're going to grant them.
Thank you.
That was the member, though, the member of the pool, the, what about people that are not members?
I don't have any evidence where members, non-members, were actually granted sick pool hours. I, I would have to get back to you on that one, Laura.
Any more questions? All right, we have a motion. I need a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye.
This all has, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roser. In the essence of time, Ms. Hurley, can we move legislative bill 201904 to after the break and move to public comments?
Is Mr. Taylor's okay with that?
Yeah.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Because I think we're going to have to run, we're going to run out of time based on the changing of the tape. So right now, we have public comments. If anyone has anything... on the changing of the tape. So right now, we have public comments. If anyone has anything to say, please state your names.
Good morning. My name is Mike Fazard. I'm a local businessman here in Wycomico County. I own Cheers, Dune Wine, in the same block as the university. I'm here to voice my concerns about the city of Salisbury having legislation in, in the January Assembly to license outlets within the city limits. I've gotten some information from the Liquor Licensing Board, my board, A.K. Kenny is the chair of that board. And my concerns are that the, the backdoor business, I'll refer to it as, the county does, is $2 million, at about 25 percent gross profit, which is half a million dollars. Not a small amount of money. But that is what the county has contributed to, or the county dispensary has contributed to the county. The dispensary is an antiquated system without oversight. I'm not going to beat on this very long. I've sent all of you an email, excuse me, along with our local state representatives, the governor and the comptroller, about my concerns. I think that we should do away with the system. We have 23 counties in the state of Maryland. Three are not county-controlled: Wycomico, Somerset, and Montgomery. I have addressed this dispensary system multiple times over my tenure here in Salisbury, my 40 years at Cheers. I think it's, it's time to, to move on. Worcester County has just made this move, and I have an associate who owns the Cheers in Berlin. There has not been an increase in crime. There has not been an increase in any problems due to opening the county to private enterprise, not public. They are my concerns. I hope you address them and think about them. But I think it's time that we've moved on. You know, half a million dollars in contributions sounds like so much, but on a $150 million budget, it is .3 of 1 percent to the bottom line. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
And Merry Christmas to you all.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comments?
Just in a quick response to Mr. Fazard's comment.
We don't usually engage, but go ahead.
No, I'm not engaging Mr. Fazard at all. The, I just think we should, work session, put that on our radar.
Yeah.
Particularly with, yeah, City of Salisbury's proposal and so forth.
Sure. I think it's a good idea. Thank you. Any more? All right, moving on to council comments, starting at the left with Vice President Cannon.
No, I'd like to say I had the opportunity to attend the West Side Historical Society's Christmas dinner. I had a great time, enjoyed it. I appreciate their company and all the hard work that they're doing. I also did not, was not able to attend the investiture of David Martz. I apologize for that, but as personal reasons, I could not make that. So congratulations to Judge Martz. And December 20th, Abigail Marsh will, will have her investiture and will be sworn in as, as a new judge. So I think that's a, that's great, a lot of great choices. And I appreciate how everything's moving forward. And I'd like to wish everybody also a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Councilman Hastings?
Yeah, I'll say, first of all, thanks to all the well wishes for, I was in the hospital last week. I did appreciate those who reached out and stopped by and visits. So thank you. I'm better now. I'll also say that I attended the State of the County last night in addition to numerous of the county executive's town hall meetings. And I was really happy to see that those continued and how well, how well they were attended, and a lot of good questions that came out of that. The other thing I had on the list was, it didn't really make much news, and maybe, maybe it shouldn't have, but immediately, but the Carden, Senator Carden and Van Hollen did announce the 3.4 million for the Salisbury Airport. That got a little bit of attention, but rebuilt, rehabilitating, rehabilitating the taxway lighting and, and you know, the apron area. That's a, I can't say that enough, that our airport is a really huge asset for us. And I used it not that, not recently, after my honeymoon. Fantastic airport. And I can't say that, I can't say that enough. The more attention that we can get, the more support that we can get for our airport, the better. And last thing I'll say is, of course, I won't, we won't see folks before the New Year. I don't think this is our last meeting. So Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ackley?
I, I had the, a pleasure of meeting with the, with the Friends of the Forest, who have, who have an interest in Pirates War. And I want to thank the county executive and his administration for listening to the concerns of this group and of the citizens of, regarding Pirates War. And I appreciate their time in doing so. So thank you very much, and have a blessed holiday.
Councilman McCain?
Just quickly, likewise, as Mr. Hastings said, several of us were in attendance last night at Executive Call for State of the County. We appreciate their presentation, Weston and Wayne, your work on that, and your, your presentation as well. Thank you very much. And just lastly, you know, we won't see everybody until next year. So Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Good. Do you have anything, Councilman Davis?
Well, I was at the meeting last night also. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Councilman Hawley?
As Bill said, this is our last meeting for 2019, 2020. Wow, it's coming up quick. So I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. One more thing I did want to mention. I understand there was a statement in one of the local papers about the county council being in favor of a tax differential with the city of Salisbury, and said that the council was, council was in favor of it, or majority of the council. I wasn't part of that majority of the council. I don't know if anybody else wants to comment on that, but I wasn't, I wasn't part of that majority of the tax differential favoritism. So I want to make that real clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawley. And our presidential comments. Yesterday, I attended the Civic Center Tourism Meeting, and it was a very productive meeting. And we discussed a five-year plan, and hopefully in the future, it'll be presented so the public can see at one of the upcoming council meetings. So thank you for all the hard work that you all do. This past Sunday, I had the opportunity to attend the Salisbury Christmas Parade. The Salisbury J.C.'s does an excellent job with that. I thought we'd have more council members there, but it's a busy time of year for everyone. So thank you to everyone that did attend. And I, I do want to give a shout out to Pittsfield Ford for the loaner vehicles. They do a great job with that, and so do some of the other dealers. Like everyone said, this is the last meeting before we have our Christmas and New Year's holidays and other holidays that are coming up that people follow. So Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And we're going to take a, a break just a minute, but I have this announcement that Ms. Hurley says we have to read.
If, if you, you might want to consider doing a recess instead of an adjournment, because we have the legislative bill that we still need to consider.
So just do a 30-minute recess right now?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll be back in 30 minutes. So we have to change the tape right now.
Do we want to try to get Ms. Hilligoss up here?
Do we have time with the tape?
I, I can check up Pac-14 if you're willing to have the work session.
He can change the tape, you know, in a matter of.
But we'd have to adjourn to go into open work session.
That is correct. Which means you would have to do the.
We can always go back.
I'm just trying to avoid them having to come back.
Well, let's do that and then take the recess. Is that okay with you? Or you want to go ahead and change it now? You want to go ahead and get ready?
Ready.
Yeah, come on. To protect, to protect the privacy of individuals. So, all right. So we're going to adjourn. Now we'll start this work session as soon as the tape is changed.
Okay. You need a motion for that adjournment.
Okay.
Some moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. Okay, moving on.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Introduce yourselves.
Thank you. I'm Ollie Hilligoss, Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County. And with me today is our Board President.
Jeanne Malone.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for allowing me to present a little something about Habitat for Humanity. You may not be aware that when President Trump made changes to the tax code, it impacted donations here locally to our affiliate. We don't receive any funding from Habitat for Humanity International. So we rely solely on grants, foundations, and private donations to fund the homes that we build, and then we resell them to our partner families. So the reason that we're here today is to ask for a partnership in short-term tax credits for, short-term property tax credits for the, the homes, the homes and the land that we're developing. And I submitted some information to you, which I thought was really compelling, the increase in property values over the last five years. For the properties that we, the 15 properties we developed, we increased property values from 413,759 to 1,012,941, which is, which is tremendous.
Mm-hmm.
And the, the cost to the county, I'll hand out this spreadsheet. Send it out this way. Pass this down. It doesn't split out the property tax between the county, the city, and the state. I didn't have that information. I'm estimating that going forward with our future property acquisitions, this would be an investment, basically, on the county's part of anywhere from three to, three to 10,000 a year. It's not a lot of money, but it is, it does make a difference for us. $10,000 is, is about what it costs us to put a foundation in. We are already paying over $6,000 a year for a staff member to do all the maintenance on the lots that we currently own. We own 15 lots, and three are not developable, we cannot develop, because they're landlocked. There's no access to city services or roads. And so right now, we really only have 10 properties that we can develop. It's time that we start reaching out to municipalities. We've had some that have reached out to us, but we, you know, if we take on more properties, that means we have to maintain those. And there's a cost to that, so.
Did we run this by the county executive yet?
I have.
Do we have a letter of support from him on this, or?
I don't have a letter of support, but he asked that I bring it to you for discussion.
This is just a work session. We do need his endorsement.
Okay. And.
A form of a letter from him.
Okay, terrific. But you can see, I sent, I sent you all some copies from Harford County and Cecil County, the other.
Are they still doing that? Because the Harford County one was 2010.
They are, they are. So these were just samples that they forwarded over to me that was easy for.
And Ollie, real quick question, because this is obviously during your holding period while you have the property.
Correct.
Which I'm 100 percent in favor of. I did notice that some of these differ, like, like Aberteens, I noticed in theirs, they put a limit, they actually, they actually request you to get an annual update, like April of every year.
Correct.
And then they also said, but no case should exceed more than three years. So I didn't know if you were putting any kind of time limit on it.
I was asking for five, because when I looked, when I, when I looked back at how long it took us to develop property, it can take, you know, it's.
I think five's fine.
It, it takes a long time with the grant, the grant process and capital bond bills and all those things.
I didn't see the five. That's what I was looking for, you know, so. Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, I saw the five, and I was just wondering what kind of timeline you were looking for. And I didn't realize it took about five years to get the property going.
It does. I mean, in fact, we have, we acquired four properties in 2016 from Hebron Savings Bank, and they were distressed properties. We were hoping we could rehab them all, but it turns out we've already demolished one. We'll demolish another one, and it, we can only save and rehab two of the four.
Oh, wow.
But then that's all those years of carrying cost, and it's expensive.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes, ma'am.
I've printed out, and I think we've passed out for the councils to look at, and I can give to the folks here in a minute when I'm done with it, printed out Harford County Code provision on this, and also Charles County Code. Harford County Code is very clear, well-written. It has a five-year limitation on it, and I would suggest that is more or less the prototype. There are two things in the Charles County Code that I think are worth considering. One is an annual review by the county. It's on page two of the handout. It's item E. And also a provision that says no retroactivity. And it specifies when the program goes into effect, and says it won't be applied retroactively. I would suggest putting those two items in with what's in the Harford County bill and, and going with that. There are two things to consider. The first is, and most counties and towns give a 100 percent credit. In other words, the entire tax is credited. It can be less than that. Frankly, if you do less than that, you're going to make a lot of unhappy, a lot of people unhappy, I can guarantee you, including Habitat and the Tax Office. And the other thing is the period of time, and we've already talked about that, the five years. And if anybody wants a different time period or unlimited, Charles County's happens to be unlimited. They don't have any limit in theirs. But in any event, that's what I'd suggest going with.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Taylor, I have a question.
Mr. Cannon?
Would this have to be done in, in concert with the budget, since it's obviously going to have to count for less revenue through the, through, sort of property tax. We're maxed out of property taxes anyway. We have 2% cap on it anyway.
Yeah, I, I'm assuming, I don't know this for a fact, but I'm assuming that when SDAT gives you their, their figures, it would take this into account. In any event, it wouldn't be very much, I don't think.
Yeah.
It would be peanuts essentially.
I'm curious. It is, I agree. But I mean, the implementation of it would have to be for the next fiscal year in concert with, with a new budget, or would it be, would it upset anything if we were to do, you know, any earlier than that?
Well, I mean, I think that's one of the reasons to have an annual review by the executive branch, and you'd know the numbers. I mean, you'd have a pretty good feel for what the numbers are going to be on the properties. I mean, they're essentially rather low-assessed properties. So even with 100 percent credit, it's not really a whole lot of money on any.
Yeah, it's actually like hundreds of dollars.
I understand, I understand. I just didn't know technically whether, how we had to dovetail it with anything else.
I, I think he's talking about the budget bill, as far as the timeline and getting that, you know, effective. How does that sink with the adoption of budget?
I would think that SDAT would handle it like any other credits. There are, there are a bunch of tax credits that are available, and, and it would be with the figures they generate. I can't swear to that, but I mean, that would be my guess. And in any event, it's going to be almost immaterial, because the amounts are going to be very, very small.
I mean, I think of, annual report is completely reasonable.
Sure.
So.
The reason I ask that, though, is because we would be cutting in expense as a council. We would be reducing in expense as a council.
Be reducing revenue.
Revenue. Revenue, I'm sorry. We'd be reducing of revenue.
If I may.
Mr. Roser?
The, the budget is, is actually just an estimate. We do get that report from SSTAT that does have additions and deletions on it, and, and adjustments are made. And the budget is merely an estimate. Not everybody is going to pay their property tax, so there's no way we can know when we do the budget, who's going to pay and who isn't going to pay. So that's not a figure certain. It's just an estimate for the county to operate with.
Right. I wasn't talking about this from a fiscal perspective. I was talking about this from a procedural aspect. That's all I'm saying. I wouldn't want the council to be out of line if the council were to vote on cutting, cutting the revenue stream. And then, because technically, that has to be added somewhere else. This is just minutia, but if, if you follow what I'm saying.
Well, I, I mean, I do, but let's face it. I mean, there are a number of counties and cities that are doing this now, and apparently it's not causing any, any.
I'm not saying we can't do it. I'm wondering how we dovetail it to initiate it. It's just a thought. I don't need an answer today. It's just for thought.
Yeah, I think it was a good question, and something we can incorporate in the next budget if we hear from the executive. And I also think that it'd be a good idea to meet with your staff once a year for the annual review. Ms. Ackley, did you have a question?
We can do that.
I, I just want to disclose that I am the vice president of Habitat.
I was going to ask you if you were a board member.
Yes, I am. But I, I'm in strong support of this, although obviously I can't vote. I can tell you, just speaking with some of the issues when we were here in the Board of Education, public schools, that Habitat makes a significant impact in those, in the lives of those who have a home, who are more stable, who can come to school, who can perform. So.
Ms. Hawley?
Fine.
Any, any other questions? Where do we go from here? Ms. Hurley?
You can take a recess if you want for lunch.
I'm talking about this situation.
We need to get endorsement amendment from our county.
Um, we need to get an endorsement amendment from our county executive.
And then have another work session.
And then we can move forward.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll do that. We'll put you back on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Merry Christmas to you all.
Merry Christmas to you. So at that point, we're gonna have a recess?
Can't we, can't we, listen, it's, it's on the agenda before lunch, and they're here.
That's your council president.
Yeah, let me run this meeting, please.
No, you're such a hurry, go to lunch, and they're, they're here, and they're scheduled before lunch.
Okay, we'll take a thirty-minute recess.
Yeah, we're sorry.